Good morning. We had some appropriations and we're starting the legislative year again here in April. We'll start off with introductions of all three committees. We're joined this morning by Criminal Justice and Public Safety on the inner horseshoe and around in the second row for us is Health and Human Services. Also, we do our usual round of introductions, remembering everybody that were being heard on the Internet and places throughout the building, so I'll give everybody a chance to know who's here. So, starting at my right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Roger Cades. I represent the Justice and Surrounding Communities in the main center.
Good morning. I'm Linda Valentino and I represent State Senate District 31, which is Sauk, Olberta Beach, Hollis, Livingston, and Park Boston.
Good morning. I'm Gay Grant and I serve in the House representing the towns of Garder and Prodigy.
Good morning. I'm Linda Samford and I represent Part of Goreham in the House.
Good morning. I'm Representative Bob Nye. I represent the towns of Oakland and Sioux.
Good morning. My name is Aaron Frye and I represent House District 51, which is part of Bangor and part of Goreham.
Good morning. My name is Eric Jorgensen and I represent Portland, uh, part of Portland in the House.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Thibodeau and I represent District 75, Attorney General Lee.
Good morning. My name is Tom Meacher. I represent the towns of Norwood, West Paris, Breeze, and District 7.
I'm John Martin. I house District 151 from Allagash through 160, Route 161 down to Route 11 all the way to Oxford.
Good morning. In Baltimore, I'm Peggy Durfundo. I represent House District 59, which is part of Williston, and I'm the House Chair of the Public Safety Committee.
Moving to the inner horseshoe, Senator Rosen.
Senator Rosen.
Yes, good luck.
I'm a citizen of the issues and have to go first and pick your last.
Yes, there is. We are all confounded by the fact that we have a new microphone system set up on the hall and it's like, oh, my goodness.
Good morning. I'm Kim Rosen, Senate District 8, going from Castings all the way up to Lake.
Good morning. I'm Representative Lori Powell. I represent District 80. It's been a long time since I've had to say this, so it seems kind of funny. I represent District 80, which is Vassar, Rowan, Windsor, Somerville, Hibbitor, and a little bit of some other states.
Good morning. I'm Michael LaJoy. I represent District 58, which is also part of Williston.
Good morning. I'm Senator Terry O'Neal. I represent District 21, Attorney Attorney Allen Bennett and Community Plantation.
Hello. Can this thing on? I don't know what was wrong with our old buttons. Good morning, everybody, and a happy new year. I'm Justin Chenette of House District 15, part of the city of Sauk.
Good morning. I'm Representative Karen Gersch. I represent District 20, which covers the towns of Levitt and Assam and Park and Southlake.
Good morning. I'm Jim Dabbett. I represent District 101, which is handled with Ken Newburg.
Good morning. I'm Russ Warner. I represent District 145, the rest of the state.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Maddow. I represent District 78, which is Wenslow, Tinsley.
Good morning. I'm Representative Lauren Powell. I represent District 45, which is Cobbleton and Potters Gray.
Good morning. I'm Representative Charlotte Warren. I represent House District 84, which is Hollowell, Manchester, and West Garder.
Good morning. Thanks for being here. I'm Senator Stan Kersowski. I represent Senate District 24, which we all know is beautiful downtown in scenic ground, the rolling hills, the fountains, the working farm community of Bartsville, the shopping and that for resource mecca of Freeport. And newly, uh, just joined in with my group is North Yarmouth, uh, called Nitro Nation.
And we are also joined by Health and Human Services Committee. There's a few members of Scandarology, Bravo, closest microphone, and introducing Sauk.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, I'm State Representative Group 18. I'm the House Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee, and I represent part of the city of Sauk.
Good morning. I'm State Representative Cameron Mashon, and I represent House District 29, which is close to Sauk.
I'm Frances Hen. I represent District 117, which is back to the Canadian border, close to Stone Main and its 24 towns and townships in western and sort of northern Maine. Very much.
And Senate Chair of Appropriations is Jim Hamper, Senator District 19, which is 13 towns and western Maine. Um, committee members, due to the temperature in here and the number of, uh, participants in this hearing, I will not object if you remove your jackets, okay? Let's, let's get that out. Sorry. No objection from the chair as far as, uh, temperature control here. Also, um, there is no overflow room downstairs in transportation, so, uh, everybody be mindful of that. We are not just in this room today and, and again, over the Internet. Um, Representative Rotundo, you have...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just want to make sure that people are clear on who should be here today. Um, this is a public hearing, um, LD 1537, an Act to Combat Drug Addiction Through Enforcement, Prevention, Treatment, Recovery. And I mention that because there's another, uh, public hearing taking place, rulemaking, um, with DHHS, um, and that is not what is happening in this room. Uh, so if you're here, uh, for a rulemaking public hearing, you're in the wrong place. And we would be happy to provide you with guidance in terms of how you get to the right place, um, but, um, we are, this is a public hearing today on LD 1537, which is, I want to clarify that for the audience, and say how nice it is to be joined, to be joined by our colleagues from Health and Human Services as well as Criminal Justice.
Very pleased to be here. Um, as always, committee members, I will do my best to make sure to acknowledge you, right, Representative Pedo? And, and, uh, if you have questions, you know, wave at me so that, uh, you can be recognized in that process. And again, Senate President Thibodeau, would you like to come forward, please? Come on down. Come on.
Is that on? I hope that you can help us up.
There we go.
You are live. New technology, huh? This is exciting. Uh, you can first say, uh, Happy New Year, and give everybody for coming back, uh, even before we were scheduled to come back, because we're so interested to get about doing, uh, business in the state of Maine. Senator Hamper, Senator Rosen, Representative Rotundo, Foul, members of the Joint Standing Committee on Appropriation and Financial Affairs and Criminal Justice and Public Safety. I am Senator President Mike Thibodeau, and I'm here to present LD 1537, which is an Act to Combat Drug Addiction Through Enforcement, Prevention, Treatment, Recovery. I'm going to take the time to read you this really great testimony this morning, because I think everybody here is quite people who are reading themselves. I do want to point out that I think that the, uh, our state is facing a crisis. I believe that, uh, everybody on both of these, all three of these committees would agree with that, and I think your constituents back home would agree with it as well. You don't have to, um, read too many newspapers or watch too many news reports to come to that conclusion. And I think it's important that we think about how we arrived back here a day or two. Just a few weeks ago, uh, the administration called together the leadership of both the House and the Senate, all four caucuses, to talk about this crisis that's facing our state. Commissioner Morris was, uh, one of the leaders of that, uh, group and, uh, expressed to us how imperative it is that we do something to fund 10 additional agents for the DEA. Uh, repeatedly, we've been told that it didn't matter, um, to folks whether this was a comprehensive plan or a simple funding of just the agents. The administration desperately wanted to make sure that we had these agents. And I don't believe, I don't believe anybody in this room believes that once the 10 agents hit the streets, that the war on drugs will be over, that everything will be better. But that doesn't mean that we don't have the responsibility to step forward and do the right thing and try to provide additional resources so that we stem the flow, slow the flow, whatever it is, we need to make sure we do everything we can to prevent enforcement from bringing this god-awful substance into our state and destroying the lives of our people. And anybody in this room that disagrees with that. Now, a few weeks ago, we were told that we did make a commitment that, uh, the crisis had gotten so bad that we were actually going to have to call out the National Gap. Not that anybody thinks that we ought to push the limits of government to the point where instead of having law enforcement do the jobs, that we ought to have the National Gap do it. So, leadership got together, had a meeting, talked about the needs of, of each of the caucuses, what's it going to take to make sure these resources become available so that we can get these 10 agents out on the streets. Now, every caucus looks at things exactly the same. Matter of fact, there's 186 of us in this building that are elected officials, 187 if you count the chief executive, and I guarantee you that none of us look at things exactly the same. Well, we came to a place where folks expressed what they needed to get on board, make sure that the funding is there for these 10 agents. I think it's a fair deal. It recognizes that there, there's more to this than simply having more agents. This is a, a more comprehensive plan than that. In fact, the members, uh, $2.4 million is spent on, on education and, uh, prevention. Probably isn't going to fix that problem, but quite frankly, it will take significantly more resources than that. I'm not sure if we spent $250 million instead of $2.5 million that we can fix the problem. But it doesn't mean that we don't have a responsibility to try and, and help as many folks as we can with our limited resources. And I know there will be much debate about whether or not we're using our resources in the correct manner. I know that we already spent significant amounts of money, um, dealing with, with drug addiction, and I think it's probably wise that we make sure that we're spending that money in the best possible fashion. But that doesn't mean that we can't do that and do this at the same time. I think it's important that we recognize that this bill that we're presenting here today isn't perfect. I hope that the committees, that, uh, the committees of jurisdiction make improvements on it. I don't believe for a second that, that, uh, it can't be improved. I think we can. But I think also, rather than, um, trying to demonize one another in this process, we ought to work collaboratively, find a way to, to do everything we can, both fund the agents and provide some reasonable amount of funding for education, treatment. This won't be the only bill this legislature has, case of when it comes to education, treatment. But it is a good first step. It's the right thing to do. It's the right message to tell the people back home that each one of us represents, that we recognize our state is in a crisis situation, that we have people that are screaming across our borders, destroying our young people's lives. I know that there's some, some flaws in this. I trust that this, these committees will do everything they can to correct them, and I hope that we're able to work in a collaborative manner and get it done in a timely fashion. You know, the day that we met, leadership met with the administration, I met Commissioner Morris after that meeting, as well as Deputy Chief of SAD, and I made a commitment to them, to individuals. I assured them that I was going to do everything I could to find a way to fund these 10 agents. I'm delivering on that promise in that. I hope you'll join me in, in delivering the end product that we all delivered with, that we all be proud of, that will provide some degree of protection for the young people who are facing this terrible epidemic. For that, I don't think any questions.
Questions from the committee. Silence is an open... Thank you. Happy New Year. Thank you. Speaker Reeves, I assume you want to speak to the bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, thank you for this opportunity to have a test by on what I think most of us, or all of us agrees, uh, one of the greatest crises that our state is facing today. Um, we've all talked about it being a top priority, as Senator Thibodeau, President Thibodeau just said, um, this is the beginning of, of that work, the continuation of that work, really. So, so, good morning, uh, Chairman Hamper, Rotundo, Rosen, and Foul, distinguished members of the Appropriations and Financial Services Committee and the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee. Uh, my name is Mark Eaton, Speaker of the House, and the honor of representing, uh, two small towns, uh, North Berwick and South Berwick, um, a town probably a lot like yours, um, around this state, a town that has the character of great, uh, downtown and great people that fill it, uh, and also, um, the stories that fill it. And some of those stories include, um, the numbers that we often talk about, the statistics of five overdose deaths per week. This story's become all too familiar to us and to many of us personal. You probably have been on the phone with a constituent as I have, with a mother that showed up to the hospital to see her son laying in the hospital, recovering from an overdose, with ashy white skin and the vivid, the vividness that, uh, that mother describes her experience of walking through those doors and seeing her son laying in a hospital bed and wondering what she could do for him. Fortunately, that conversation that I had with that mother, it's 200 days in advance. Her son is in recovery for 200 days now and is on the other side of it. There are many people in this state that aren't on the other side of it, and that's why we feel committed to addressing this on the law enforcement side, the treatment side, the prevention recovery side, the education side. The only thing that is not acceptable is to do nothing. The status quo is not going to solve this crisis, and I appreciate Senator Thibodeau and other legislative leaders and other legislators that have, um, helped put this bill together. We do need to act quickly. Uh, it does require our full attention. I believe that we can get this through, uh, quickly, um, and that this is a recognition of an outcome, of a first step towards other legislation, uh, that we will be seeing this session. The bipartisan group of the Legislative Council let in five additional bills related to the drug crisis, and, uh, you guys are going to be able to work on, on many of those bills. Um, I appreciate you coming in a day before we get back to work, uh, as a legislature, uh, to take this unusual step and come in before, to really, I think, demonstrate to the public the acknowledgement of the seriousness of this crisis and that we're going to get it done. Uh, we can make a decision, and we have a decision to make. We can focus on what we don't like about this bill, or we can focus on what step it is. And I appreciate those that have acknowledged that this isn't a solution to everything. I share that acknowledgement. Um, as President Thibodeau said, if, uh, anyone of you were writing this bill alone, it would look different than this. If I wrote this bill alone, it would look different than this. This is what is possible in divided government. This is what's possible that we can do now. This is within our control. Um, I thank you for your attention to it. Again, anything is on the table except doing nothing. The status quo is not acceptable. We must do something, and this bill represents a first step towards that. So, thank you for your time and your intention to this, and I'll take any questions if you have them.
Questions from the committee. Again, silence and voting.
Very good. Thank you all.
Thank you. Are there any other cosponsors of the bill? Do I have anybody else in here that's cosponsored?
No.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Will, uh, Representative Tool, sorry. Didn't see your motion there. I... Yeah, yes, you're on.
I didn't want to be first. I didn't want to leave the gate up here. Well, thank you all. It's nice to be here today and nice to be back today early. Been a long six months off. Uh, Senator Hamper, Senators Hamper, Brady, Rosen, Representatives Rotundo, Gaddin, and Foul, distinguished members of the Appropriations, Health, and Human Services and Criminal Justice Committee. My name is Will Tool. I represent the communities of Palak, East Metchaius, Eastport, Lubac, Metchaius, Metchaius Port, Oaklock, Whiting, and Prescott Township in the 127th main legislature, and I'm here today to speak in support of this bipartisan approach to drug abuse, as the Senate President Thibodeau and Speaker Reeves so eloquently put the point. Drug addiction has ripped Maine in general, rural Maine in particular, from Washington County and many of the small coastal communities I represent in specific, personal, and true sad ways. The legislature has a number of policy options to consider this session when determining how to fight the war on drugs, a war which I believe we have no choice but to win, whether we are talking about accountability, education, treatment, or, most importantly, a combination of all three. As a cosponsor of this legislation, I would submit that this option before us is effective and is an effective and important piece of our legislative work this session. No, we won't solve the problem quickly, or simply by throwing money at it, but we can start by doing, by taking a focused, targeted approach. Drug dealers, those who commit crimes, and those who commit drug crimes need to know that their actions are unacceptable, then they will be called to account for their crimes. Addicts need treatment, not just swapping one drug for another, but real treatment that addresses the underlying issue. And, and the communities that have, that have received by these laws, by, by the drugs and drug abuse, need to be actively involved in education and awareness efforts to root out the substances that have devastated consequences on every Maine family daily. I want to say again that we can't convince, that we can't convince ourselves by stamping out one drug, swapping one drug for another. Our problem is not an heroin problem exclusive. A few years ago, the rage was back solved. A couple of weeks ago, Brent and I were talking about how fortunate MetLife overtaken Washington County. That same day, a meth lab was discovered in a four-town west state. The 54 discovered in Maine this past year, I ride by the place where it's discovered every day, uh, every week on my way to eat. So, drugs, and yes, they do include marijuana in that category, are ravaging our state, and we need to be clear that treatment isn't simply about treating the physical aspects of addiction, but also the mental and spiritual, because they do exist as well and in some ways are more important. This past fall, I had the chance to visit the Teen Challenge Farm down the road a piece in Winslow, Winfield. Their faith-based drug rehab program with a success rate in the, in the mid-80 percent range. The Bangor Daily has also done feature articles on other faith-based programs, and in my hometown, a group of local churches, including my own, have banded together to start in the, to start and develop a rehab, a local rehab, I would, that I would hope going forward as we deal with the drug issue, that we can find a way to acknowledge these efforts and more fully integrate them and bring them into the treatment mix that we have today. There are, they are relevant and welcome at a time when mayors can't, can't afford to leave off, to leave off, to leave options up to base. Beyond that, our schools need to be less concerned about other initiatives such as Common Core and the like, and more concerned about providing quality responses and local drug education opportunities. Some would say they're not doing enough. Some would say they can't keep with the ever-changing need. Some might even say they're not doing anything. I would say if we are going to have a long-term lasting impact and success, we need to educate our kids to the ills of drug use and abuse, and that drug abuse is unacceptable, and we need to be firm, especially with kids who are looking up to us for leadership and direction. The governor has asked for a plan to combat this crisis that included funding for drug agents. Enforcement is an essential piece of this bill as well, and while we can't arrest our way out, we sure as heck better start holding dealers and those who exploit others accountable for their crimes, or we are never going to get over the proverbial hump of this bill. This bill does that. An equal amount of money is allotted on treatment and prevention, so we ought to be able to get this passed without any hysteria over, or hyperventilating. Sure, it will take some long hours and work, but failing our constituents isn't the real answer, honestly. I also want to applaud the Senate President and Speaker for coming up with a way to fund this, fund this bill without raising taxes. It is not too often that we are in a position to do that, and we ought to take advantage of the opportunities we have, as it wasn't too many years ago, which we were srouding around, spying tens of millions of dollars here. It wasn't too long ago that we were srouding around, spying tens of millions of dollars. This money won't come out of the taxpayer's pocket, and we ought to be thankful. options up to faith. Beyond that, our schools need to be less concerned about other initiatives, such as Common Core and the like, and more concerned about providing quality, responsive, and local drug education opportunities. Some would say they're not doing enough. Some would say they can't keep with the ever-changing need. Some might even say they're not doing anything. I would say if we are going to have a long-term lasting impact and success, we need to educate our kids to the ills of drug use and abuse, and that drug abuse is unacceptable, and we need to be firm, especially with kids who are looking up to us for leadership and direction. The governor has asked for a plan to combat this crisis that included funding for drug agents. Enforcement is an essential piece of this bill as well. And while we can't arrest our way out, we sure as heck better start holding dealers and those who exploit others accountable for their crimes, or we are never going to get over the proverbial hump, so to speak. This bill does that. An equal amount of money is allotted on treatment and prevention, so we ought to be able to get this passed without any hysteria or hyperventilating. Sure, it will take some long hours and work, but calling and failing our constituents isn't the real answer, I... I also want to applaud the Senate President and Speaker for coming up with a way to fund this. Fund this bill without raising taxes. It is not too often that we are in a position to do that, and we ought to take advantage of the opportunities we have. As it wasn't too many years ago, when we were srounging around finding tens of millions of dollars here, it wasn't too long ago that we were srounging around finding tens of millions of dollars. This money won't jump out of the taxpayer's pocket, and we ought to be thankful for that. Thank you for hearing my testimony. I'm not even going to apologize for riding on, and you all will be well enough by now to know that I do it every time I get up. So thank you, and welcome back.
Thank you, Representative. Are there any questions, please? Thank you very much. Representative Maker, come again?
Good morning, and happy new year to all. Senator Hamper, Representative Rotundo, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Appropriations and Financial Affairs and all other committees, I am Representative Joyce Maker, representing the House District 140, which includes towns of Bayville, Callas, Charlotte, Passamaui Indian Township, Passamaui Pleasant Point, Pembroke, Perry, Robinson, and Bering Foundation. I am here today in support of LD 1537, an Act to Combat Drug Addiction Through Enforcement, Prevention, Treatment, and Recovery. Everyone in this room is concerned about mayors who are addicted to drugs and drug dealers. They threaten the lives of our neighbors. It breaks my heart when I hear about yet another kid in my district that is in trouble with the law. This drug crisis is a scary thing to see, and I want to make sure that we in the legislature are doing what we can to act. Behind me, I see Republicans and Democrats, as well as members of enforcement, prevention, and treatment communities. And I believe that when you sit as a united front on each facet of a complex problem, it's very compelling. These are the people on the front lines of the problem, and we should trust what they have to say. It is clear that we need more agents, and it's clear that we need new treatment and prevention options. I'm gratified to see that we're moving ahead with common sense solutions. I'm especially proud today because I have a police chief for my district. He's going to tell you what it's like in Washington County, and I stand behind him. And I have to say and admit that I probably wouldn't be here if it wasn't for this gentleman. So I'm really, really anxious for you to hear it. I want to end by saying something that I heard, and it's going to be another quote I think I'm going to steal that I heard, and it's not who's right, but what is right. And I think that's what we need to do. And thank you for hearing my testimony, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any more questions from any of the committees? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other legislators wishing to speak for, against whichever? No, okay. Commissioner, one on.
Thank you for the opportunity. Chairs and members of all three committees, this is a first to me to testify before all three, but it's great. I am here to testify, my name is John Marzal, I'm Commissioner of Public Safety. I'm here to testify neither for or against this bill. My intent is wanting is to just kind of paint a picture of where we are today in the state in this crisis. And you've heard some of this before, but I would be very quick and just point out some facts. Every police chief and sheriff in this state will attest to the fact that drugs are driving the crime rate in this wonderful state of Arkansas. All you have to do is take a look at the newspaper any day of the week, and you will see drug arrests. Take a look at the mugshots and the addresses of the people who are being arrested. A great number of them are from out of state, specifically Massachusetts, Fall River, Bedford, Lynn, New York, Brooklyn, Bronx. This is where the drugs are coming from. These are the kingpins, and some of them are gang members. They are organized entrepreneurs. They understand the supply and demand curve. They get it. They're establishing their corners, if you will, in our state. One difference between them and regular entrepreneurs in our state is that they are ruthless. They will do anything they need to do to maintain control of their corner. Let's go to a, I guess, what I want to say is they're not our neighbors. They're simply not up here to shop at L.L.B. or to buy lobsters. They are here to poison our people. BAG, and those that just come out, and everybody I'm sure has seen it, that we're at a point where we're having five OD deaths per week. Absolutely unbearable. I'm estimating, and I think Janet will be doing so also, that we're going to suffer between 240 and 250 OD deaths this past year. Those figures will be coming up shortly. That's many more deaths than we saw in highway accidents, which before were always, as you know, the leading cause of deaths in our state. I figure you've all heard before, but one that I simply cannot tolerate. 2014, 961 babies in this state who were drug addicted or affected. Nine sixty-one. Eight percent of all live births in this state in 2014 were babies who were drug addicted or affected. We still don't know what that really means. What does that mean in 10 years? I suspect that the people that come after you and me will be discussing, how do we deal with 10-year-old children who were drug addicted when they were born? We don't know. A good representative, I would correct, since he did his writing, we have had 56 meth labs in 2015 in the state of Maine. You know, we had cocaine, and then we had opioids, and now we're in a heroin crisis, which is the worst of all. Watch out, here comes the meth labs fast-tracking right up behind us. And the issue with the meth labs is, as most of you know, we have 32 MDEA agents present there. Cleaning meth labs is very strenuous and very difficult and requires a great deal of training. The only people that can clean meth labs in our state are MDEA agents who have gone to Quantico, Virginia, where they were trained by the national DEA agents. So just think about it, one meth lab a week, we have 32 drug agents out there working heroin and other things, but they have all...